Okay, the hour of six o'clock having arrived, we'll call the regular meeting of the Sherman Village Board of Order. Mr. Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Trustee Hahn.
Yes.
Trustee Long.
Yes.
Trustee Rockford.
Yes.
Trustee Schultz.
Yes.
Trustee Tim. Village President Klasshalter.
Yes. That is six members of the Village Board present, core being established, we're gonna proceed with the order of business and set up on the agenda. Couple of items I'd like to basically read into the record here. Uh, trustee Jay Tim has moved away and purchased a home in Auburn with he and his wife. Um, he is brown to accommodate his wife, Robin. Her, uh, lovely hobby that she's into now, which is horses. So you can't do that in the Village corporate limits. Uh, but we are going to recognize trustee Tim in the near future for his dedicated long service to the Village of Sherman. We can't thank him enough for his, um, dedication, honor that he served with. He oversaw police department for, uh, for a very long, uh, number of years. I've worked with Chief Banger, previous chief, um, Eric Smith, and all of our officers have been in on all of the hiring. So he is, uh, good, uh, he can lay claim to all the excellent officers that we've hired. Excellent officers that have moved on to bigger, uh, departments for more activity because we love our town and we love not having a lot of activity out in small, small town Sherman. So, uh, so we're gonna, we're gonna honor, uh, Mr. Tim in the near future. So with that being said, he is not in attendance this evening because only statute does not allow for somebody who does not live in the Village corporate limits to service trustee. Moving past that, trustee Kim Rockford is on speakerphone this evening. She is out of town in Chicago on business for the state of Illinois, which permits her to be able to call in and attend a meeting virtually or, uh, by phone. So she is a dedic- another dedicated trustee to the Village Board who wanted to, um, even away in her stead, still be on this, uh, in this meeting and be on this call. So, so trustee Rockford has answered the roll and is included in this meeting. Okay, for the record, today's date is Tuesday, June 21st of 2022. Uh, the location is Sherman Village Hall located at 401 St. John's Drive in Sherman, Illinois. The time is 6:00 PM, and this is a regular meeting of the Sherman Village Board of Trustees. So as we move along in the opening, and we're past the, if you do have your agendas or if you're looking at the agenda, it brings us to the Pledge of Allegiance, of which I would like to ask everybody to stand, face the flag. Chandler, could you please go up here front and center? I'm gonna, I'm gonna get you back up though. How about Joe and Dean, Dino Senior come up here with Chandler? We're gonna ask that the both of you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, so on your cue. You guys go, we'll go. Ready?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, thanks guys. Okay, we need to set the agenda. The agenda's been posted 48 hours in advance of the meeting in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. There can be no action items added to the agenda unless they're of an emergency purpose, which we do not have any this evening. So with that being said, uh, the Chair would entertain a motion to set the agenda. Is there a motion to that effect? Trustee Long makes a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Hahn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, the agenda is set. We're gonna move to the Clerk's report. Item number one is the presentation of the May 24th, 2022 Board Meeting Minutes. Clerk Bull and Administrator Stratton have sent those out to the trustees prior to this meeting. You've all had the time, I hope, to review those minutes. Do you have any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented by the clerk? Any additions as presented by clerk of the board? Okay, seeing none, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the May 24th, 2022 Minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Trustee Gray makes a motion, is there a second? Seconded by trustee Long. Mr. Clerk, please follow the roll.
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Trustee Hahn.
Yes.
Trustee Long.
Yes.
Trustee Rockford. Trustee Schultz.
Yes.
Five members voting yes, none voting no. The minutes are adopted. It will be added to the board's website in the board's summation. Next item, item number two is the presentation of the bills for approval. Again, board members have those in your electronic copies that were sent out. You've had time to review those. With that being said, I would ask, is there any questions regarding the bills? And then for administration staff, is there anything to point out, anything outside the normal course of business, day-to-day activities? Nothing, nothing from police, nothing from public works, nothing from, nobody, anybody? Okay, so we need a motion to approve the bills for payment, is there a motion to that effect? Trustee Gray makes a motion, seconded by trustee Hahn. Mr. Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Trustee Hahn.
Yes.
Trustee Long.
Yes.
Trustee Rockford.
Yes.
Trustee Schultz.
Yes.
So that is five members voting yes, none voting no, the bills are approved for payment. It's gonna bring us and move us along to the Treasurer's Report. We have Assistant Treasurer Penley in attendance. Uh, let's see, what do we have there?
Uh, just updates to the board.
Bear with me. So there's no Treasurer's Report in this one, right?
No, there is not Treasurer's Report in this, no, there's not. The Treasurer Report is completed, it's under review right now by my office and the Treasurer's Office in order to validate from fiscal year, which means we'll also be in here probably the next couple of months. The fiscal year '21 audit, I think, is completed?
I reached out to him today trying to get a date for a wrap-up, haven't heard back yet.
Hopefully we'll be able to do that in the fall of July with that, a lot of funding.
Okay. Anything else under the Treasurer's Report? Village Engineers Report?
Um, I have nothing really to report other than the old tip to bike trail. We're getting pretty close to issuing the notice to proceed for the contractor to cover this, we're still dealing with insurance requirements, bonds, stuff like that.
Alright, any questions regarding engineering? Okay, let's move to the Legal Report, anything on the legal?
Nothing to say, nothing at this meeting, in the near future.
Village Administrator, economic department.
Yeah, that's why they were working, we're taking two more.
Okay.
No report there.
No report. That brings us to the President's Report. We have a number of items listed on the Treasurer's Report. What I wanna do... I actually want to skip around in the President's Reports. And do item number three at this time. So we're gonna move that to, up to the top of the President's Report.
Good, because it's getting kinda long way over here.
Alright.
We're outnumbered.
So everybody knows I like to talk, so I wanna qualify a little bit of stuff here before we move to item number three. It goes on the heels of trustee Jay Tim's very notable service that he dedicated to the Village of Sherman. It's sad to see that, to see Jay go. He's, uh, he's always been a steadfast, steady hand for the Village of Sherman, whether it be helping at concerts, organizing cleanup day, um, running the police department, overseeing the actions there, or just anything that he would call upon our. I mean, he's served in the military, he's served multiple, in multiple public service facets, and he's always there. He is always, always there. And so it's a big void, it's a, it's, it's, it's a big loss for the village. But with that being said, we need to fill his vacancy that has been created. The individual that I would like to bring forward and ask for advice, consent, and to be appointed to the Village Board doesn't have the same number of years of service and age as Jay, but is always, always, always there for the village. And this decision was not even tough. When I thought about who would be perfect for this role, who could attempt to fill Jay Tim's shoes, the name stood out at the very top, and it wasn't even close, and didn't need to look any further. So with that being said, that individual that I'm talking about is somebody who is constantly, always, at all of our events, volunteering, taking over various different things, and looking to do good things for the village, whether it be the Christmas party, the children's Christmas party, the Easter egg hunts, working with community organizations like the Sherman Chamber of Commerce, organizing anything and everything that you can think of, and he does it with a lot of flair. So, that individual is our very own Village Clerk, and that's Sean Bull. So what I wanna do is I wanna ask for advice and consent, I wanna ask the Village Board, bring Sean Bull to fill the vacancy that's been created by trustee, um, Jay Tim. I've talked to, I think, every single board member or you ever, you know, tried to reach out to everybody, and everybody immediately was a resounding yes. So he's ascending into this position and will be seated in the lonely side of the board tonight. Um, but we need to swear him in. I asked if his family and friends could be here, um, his closest, uh, friends, the Nino's are here. And his family, our very own zoning chairman, Keith Bull, and the best cake baker in the country, Sue Bull's mother, is here in attendance. So, without... I wanna, I wanna call Sean up, I wanna swear him in, and I wanna also bring up Keith and Sue, if you wanna come up. You know what, you know what I just did? Yeah. Krista, your wife is right there. Who makes it all possible? As long as it's how.
Well, you're nice and hurtful.
So we actually need to do the motion first, correct? Would you state the motion, uh...
It could simply be a motion to appoint Mr. Bull to the vacancy on the board created by the departure of trustee Tim.
So, the Chair would entertain a motion to appoint Sean Bull to the vacancy created by trustee Jay Tim. And what else did you say? Okay. Is there a motion to that effect? Trustee Long makes a motion, seconded by trustee Schultz. Mr. Clerk, please call a roll for the last time. For the last time.
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Trustee Hahn.
Yes.
Trustee Long.
Yes.
Trustee Rockford.
Yes.
Trustee Schultz.
Yes.
Okay, so the major, having, uh, garnered enough votes on the prevailing side, allows the Village President to weigh in and vote in, vote on the prevailing side. So I would like to vote, and as well be recorded as a yes. That's six members voting yes, none voting no. We would like to seat trustee Sean Bull. We're going anywhere just yet, we're gonna actually officially swear him in, just like we would do, and we have, uh, swearing in. Did you, wanna take any photo or video, family? You ready to raise your right hand? My feet after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name. Having been appointed...
Having been appointed.
To the office of Village trustee.
To the office of Village trustee.
In the Village of Sherman.
In the Village of Sherman.
In the County of Sangamon.
In the County of Sangamon.
Afore said...
Afore said.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm...
Or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Village trustee.
Of the office of Village trustee.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my ability.
Welcome to the board, Sean. Come on, don't show me this social media thing here.
Hey, I have an empty chair.
You gonna take some pictures with your phone, or?
Alright, here we go. Take another one.
Alright, so now, what that has triggered is we have an acting Village Clerk. It's very definitely. Deputy. So we have a deputy Village Clerk, and that action had already been taken some time ago when our previous clerk had left and we were filling that vacancy. That position is being filled by, only filled by the Village Administrator until we actually appoint a new Village Clerk. So, for the remainder of time till we do that, it'll be Deputy Clerk Stratton acting in that role. We now have the newly seated trustee, trustee Bull, who I wanted to give the opportunity to take some votes tonight, so that's why I moved that to the top of the, to the top of the agenda, um, or in the President's Report. Okay, so let's move along. Let's go back to the top. Item number one is listed on the agenda, and I'll leave that into the record. And that's ordinance, and it's regarding an authorization to purchase a Toro, grounds mower, utility trailer, and finance those items. So, we have the Public Works Director Sean Newton, who's in attendance. They do an unbelievable job at mowing, and we have an unbelievable crew. Full-time hires that we have, and then the part-time, permanent part-timers, which are a lot of retired police and firemen. And they move around and swarm to knock out all the different tasks that are needed in the Village of Sherman. Mowing, 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 just everything, and you just see them move, and you see them get these tasks done. But with that being the case, some of the mowers are at the end of their useful life, and it's the X marks. And so we need, we purchased two Toro mowers, um, last year, two years ago, and we're due for another mower. So it's on the agenda, we need to move forward, we've put it in the budget. And so the ask tonight is that we get the Public Works Department a Toro mower, because they actually like those better. They're no, no longer fans of the X mark, and the Toro seems to be a much better commercially-built mower. So, the 2022 Toro Z Master 7500 Series, 37 horsepower diesel with 72-inch deck and site discharge. We have a delivery date of July 22nd by a dealer, Central Illinois, in Kansas, Illinois. The MSRP on it is $37,221 discounted for municipality, um, government, discounted to $27,171.33 sets. So we need to move forward on that, that's in the ordinance, correct?
Yeah, and the finance miserable.
So everything's in your ordinance. I'm just reading this stuff into the record. The utility trailer is a new 20 to 22-foot utility tandem trailer with side rail rails and drop gauge, drop gate. Trailer's Direct is where we would find that trailer master, did not meet the specs. So the Trailer's Direct trailer would cost $6,400. The financing that's needed in the ordinance would be estimated not to exceed $35,000 on a 36-month note, um, and it would be automatically deducted from our Village account. The financing quotes that we received were from, well, we asked four different banks. Two banks responded, UCB responded, IMB responded, Lanesville State Bank and Trust did not respond, and Hickory Point Bank did not respond. Of the two, and this is the first that I've seen in a while, UCB actually came in lower than IMB. IMB came in at 3.91% for 36 months, and UCB came in at 3.59... 3.9, 5.9% for 36 months. So, we need to adopt this ordinance that includes all of those items and get Public Works the equipment that they need. Is there any discussion or questions regarding the ordinance that lays on particular? Nothing, no thing?
Something they need, and, and gotta order now, because if you don't, we won't get it till next year or whatever.
Right. So, is everybody comfortable to move forward? Alright, Mr. Clerk, I'm gonna first ask for a motion. Is there a motion to adopt and approve the ordinance? So ordinance 22 dash zeros, 2022 dash 07, an ordinance approving the bid to the United Community Bank to finance the purchase of a 2022 Toro mower and utility trailer. Is there a motion to that effect? Public Works trustee, uh, Brian Long makes a motion, is there a second? Seconded by trustee Hahn. Mr. Clerk, Mr. Deputy Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Trustee Hahn.
Yes.
Trustee Long.
Yes.
Trustee Rockford.
Yes.
Trustee Schultz.
Yes.
Trustee Bull.
Yes. Okay, so that is five members voting yes, none voting no. It's actually six. Oh, I'm sorry, that's right, it's six. Yeah, yeah, sorry. Six members voting yes, none voting no, the ordinance is adopted. Item number two is a resolution, it's an ameron easement.
It's actually a form of...
So ordinance 22 dash zero, 08 is an ordinance approving an easement with ameron. Can we give any background on that?
Kevin, you probably could speak better than that.
Which one is this?
This is the one where the purchase...
Oh, they're purchasing?
Yeah.
Ameron has requested that the Village clarify the terms of easement in the vicinity of Charter Oak Village.
This is a very, this is a triangle right at the corner of the intersection of those roads, uh, and... Some, but some easement geek at Ameron decided that it wasn't clear enough, so they had asked us to clarify it. I've looked at it, uh, looked at the map, it's fine.
Okay. On the Legal's recommendation, everybody comfortable moving forward? Okay, we do entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 22 dash 08, easement with Ameron. Trustee Gray makes a motion. Uh, trustee Rockford will make a motion, and seconded by trustee Gray. Deputy Clerk Stratton, please call the roll.
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Trustee Hahn.
Yes.
Trustee Long.
Yes.
Trustee Rockford.
Yes.
Trustee Schultz.
Yes.
Trustee Bull.
Yes.
Six members voting yes, none voting no, the ordinance is adopted. Item number four in the President's Report, reading into the record, is an authorization, is asking for authorization to hire a public works employee to fill a vacated position. Trustee Long, Director Newton, our other public works employee, Bruce Beal, Administrator Stratton, and myself have interviewed a few people for this position. This is George Hewitt, uh, who retired from the Village. When was that? Last November. So, we need to fill that, that vacancy.
Which is a full-time position.
This is a full-time public works position. Shaw, Director Newton, Brian, trustee Long, Administrator Stratton, and I don't put Bruce in on the first interview.
Yes.
And, and Mr. Beal. They all interviewed a couple candidates, local candidates, um, initially. And then they recommended that I sit down with them, and which, of which I did. Um, and it was the, almost the same people that trustee Long couldn't make it. So, we interviewed them, and there's a position that says open. So of the two very good candidates, we like both of them, you can see both of them working for the village. Given the fact that there's one position open right now, we need another, we need three. Um, but there's one position open that was in the budget, the dollars are there. We would recommend moving forward on one of those individuals at this time, and then as we move forward over the next few months, seeing what actually happens in public works, whether an actual retirement does happen, or if I can stop that. If I can, if I can stop that one from happening. Um, but we do wanna move forward with, uh, recommending, and we're, this is unanimous. Like I said, both of the candidates are excellent, we take either one of them, but there's one that just stood out a little bit more above the other, uh, being the first one. So, we would recommend that Matthew Sanderbeck, who lives here in Sherman, I'm not gonna read out his address, um, but he's on this side of Business 55. We would offer him $24.50 per hour, which is a salary of $50,960 annually, plus all the full-time benefits that are afforded to all the other Village employees. And that would include a six-month probationary period. Now, his employer that he's at now, both of them, they work for the same place, and I don't think that they wanna see that go, because they're vacant employees from over here. But I think they're excited about working here, it's very close, walking distance for him, essentially. Um, so trustee Long, do you wanna state anything for the record?
No, it's just, uh, you know, we, we need to get somebody here now, because obviously we don't want Bruce to leave, but he does all the knowledge he has, and hopefully he translates to this guy, and, and, uh, of course, Sean will still be here. He's very knowledgeable too, he can spread his knowledge, but, uh, no, I think it's good we do it now, and then hopefully, uh, Bruce won't retire right away.
Director Newton, anything?
Just like you guys have said, one good thing I like about him is he's a young man. You know, we need some youth in this department, for sure.
Yeah.
And he's a local kid, he's very excited, and he said he wants to make a career out of it, and he has a great resume, he's got a lot of experience, and I think he would be a perfect fit for our small groups.
Yeah, for sure. And that's one thing that stood out too, I mean, like, both of them, but, you know, he's the, he can just mesh, basically what we do with the police department. When you think about building a team, somebody that can go in and mesh with everybody else that's already there and be, you know, a good cohesive group for family, you know, team. So, and he's a graduate from Lanesville High School, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so, anyway, any questions regarding this?
I'll just say that we, we're very lucky to find any candidates in this market today. Going for maybe a little more kind of, more experienced knowledge in both of these candidates. Matthew would by far be a state of the game, I think he meets the, he is gonna fit so well and so quickly within the operations. That six-month probationary period would probably be less than 45 days. That's how well he's gonna mesh with the group. So, I think this is a blessing based on some of our private experiences over the years, so I look forward to the opportunity.
Alright, so, that being said, we're gonna entertain a motion to hire Matthew Sanderbeck. At a rate of $24.50 per hour, which before overtime would be $50,960 annually. Is there a motion to that effect? Trustee Long makes a motion, is there a second? Trustee Gray seconds the motion. Deputy Clerk Stratton, please follow the roll.
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Trustee Long.
Yes.
Trustee Long.
Yes.
Trustee Rockford.
Yes.
Trustee Schultz.
Yes.
Trustee Bull.
Yes.
And the major, having received a majority vote... And the major having received a majority vote, I'll weigh in to solidify my support of Matthew, Matt, and be recorded as a guest as well. So, that is unanimous, seven to nothing vote for Mr. Sanderbeck, who will be given a start date. You guys will work that out. All right, so we'll move past that, so that major carries. The next item, item number five, is the Williamsburg All Class Reunion. We're gonna make a, we're asking to make a donation to the Williamsburg Community Foundation to support this program. The Village of Williamsburg donated a thousand dollars to this. They asked that we match it, which we've done in the past when they've had that. It's a great, it's a great deal, they're gonna get a band and some other items. So, supporting the community, helping our sister town, since it'll be housed and, you know, take place there. I see no reason why not to, you know, to do this, so is there any discussion?
What is the date of that? I don't know what it is. Someone thinks, wait. Sean?
I was thinking September.
It's coming. I know it coincides with the Williamsburg football. The first, I think, the home, first home game.
Their fall festival.
That probably is, yeah.
It's the same time.
Sounds like Trustee Hon's making a motion.
That's so.
To appropriate a thousand dollars to the Williamsburg Community Foundation for the All Class Reunion. It's gonna be seconded by Trustee Bull. Any discussion seen? None. Deputy Clerk Stratton, please call the roll.
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Trustee Hon.
Yes.
Trustee Long.
Yes.
Trustee Rockford.
Yeah.
Trustee Schultz.
Yes.
Trustee Bull.
Yes.
Why would I vote on something this early? Go ahead and record me as a guest, that's seven members voting yes. All right, seven, nothing. I'll let Mayor Yoblin know. Next item is committee and department reports. So, we have, first item is, since we read into the record, is a recommendation on petition. Recommendation on petition for variance for a setback for property located at twenty-seven Kingsway Drive in Sherman. The zoning, zoning board recommends approval of the petition. I did not get a chance to attend that zoning board meeting, the chairman is in attendance. I don't know if you wanna make any remarks, but, or, any other questions? What's that?
That was very straightforward.
Very straightforward, everybody comfortable with it? Okay, so we need a motion, we need to act on the ordinance, recommendation on petition for that variance. Does that have ordinance number? Twenty-two oh nine, makes sense. Ordinance twenty-two oh nine, is there a motion to adopt said ordinance? Trustee Hon makes a motion, is there a second? Seconded by Trustee Gray, who's called the roll.
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Trustee Hon.
Yes.
Trustee Long.
Yes.
Trustee Rockford.
Yeah.
Trustee Schultz.
Yes.
Trustee Bull.
Yes.
All right, six members voting yes, none voting no, the motion carries, the ordinance is adopted, motion carries. Uh, the second one, item B listed on the agenda, recommendation on petition for zoning change for property located at thirteen oh nine Arlington Chase in Sherman. So, you guys wanna state this? This says, again, I wasn't at the, the W B zoning board recommends approval of petition for the village engineer legal recommendation. So, I would say and ask is for legal and engineers to, are you comfortable with moving forward on this, this evening? Are you ready? Yes?
Yes.
Do you wanna explain the issue? Chairman? Okay, Trustee Rockford would like, uh... F ten, Chairman, if you wanna weigh in. I apologize, I wasn't able to attend the hearing, so.
This is a request for a change from agricultural zoning to R one zoning for a large piece of property, it's, I don't remember the precise acreage. With Arlington Chase, that grassland runs across the top of that lake. The request is to bring it in, is to bring it into the R one district, which makes, from a zoning perspective, makes sense. It is a larger piece of property than the lots surrounding it. The neighbors had some objections to that rezoning. They were worried about the, the impact on surrounding property values. But again, it's a larger piece of property than, than the lots on which they sit. They were worried, they were worried about the environmental impact because of the loss of trees and, and the loss of wildlife in the area. But there were concerns about utility easements, and they were worried about, you know, removing trees and dirt, removing dirt, moving dirt around. A series of issues that are traditionally dealt with in the, in the building permit process. Those are, you know, obviously, the utility easements would be a concern in the building process. The other issue, frankly, the other issues are issues that can be dealt with not in the zoning process, but in the building permit process. So, you have, you have before you a letter, both from, from Engineer Coon and from me, recommending approval for change to R one for my... I'll just say, I, I wrote the letter because I had the time to do it. I mean, I just checked it against the ordinance. You know, the ordinance doesn't speak to whether it should be done, it's whether it can't, you know. If it needs A, B, C, D, and E, then, then there's nothing to prevent you from amending. Well, we're technically amending the zoning map, is what it's actually called. So, I just checked it against it and found that there wasn't really anything outstanding that the ordinance, there isn't anything in the ordinance that says you can't do. How's that? That's the other way to look at it, is like, this is violate the ordinance, it doesn't, I, I don't think it violates the ordinance, so. But again, I don't, I don't read the, it's not my job to interpret whether it should happen, it's whether it can't.
Is this the piece of property right here coming out of Steeple Chase, right to the left?
Yes.
Okay, that long was just a voided area, very thin long.
It's a leftover piece? I think what happened was, there was a huge piece of ground, and they bought, the developers of Steeple Chase bought that, and that was the remaining piece that the original owner wanted.
Okay. I wasn't at the second zoning, so maybe, maybe the chairman can, what happened at the second meeting?
Um, it was a knock-down drag-up, no. Okay, I was straight-faced here, so, but no, it was, um, the, and I agree with you completely, and I, I felt that way at the first meeting too, that all the, the zoning change met all the requirements within the ordinance. So, as, as our committee, there was nothing to, to not make that recommendation. There was a fair amount of concern from residents in that area, which I understand that, and I kind of have been in the same environment myself a time or two, and, but I think as you look at, as you look at the actual, on the merits of the actual request, I think everything fits the guidelines over there. The, the concerns that the other homeowners had does come into play, and then you get into the building situation, which that's our ballpark as well, so. And if you have any questions, I mean, feel free to ask. We did extend the decision, we did not make that decision in our first meeting, we extended that to allow for some examination and exploration, and stuff. So, anyway, we just wanted to make sure everybody was comfortable, and clear with, with the regs, and make sure we did the right thing on that, so.
If Kevin correctly went wrong, is the ag designation for zoning is far less restrictive than that of R one?
Right, R one is the most restrictive zoning that we have in terms of setbacks and density and all that, there isn't, I mean, the, the... Yes, that's, that's the most restrictive zoning we have.
So, whoever purchased, is that their intent to just put a house on it?
I think they want to split it in half and put two houses.
And access, access one road and access the other road?
Okay. Trustee Hon, we're talking about this piece of property.
Yeah, I, I thought of what, yeah, okay.
To, so the record is complete, we, we did receive, we, meaning the village, did receive an objection from the property owners in the neighborhood. Both the Sherman Code and the municipal code allow for the filing of protest against any proposed amendment to zoning districts. In the event that, that an objection is filed by, by twenty percent of the property owners adjacent to this piece of property, it requires a two-thirds vote of the, in reference to a majority on the village board. Because it requires a supermajority, the president is allowed to vote, and given that there are, my first into math, without Mr. Tim's seat being filled, and now that his seat has been filled, the two-thirds vote requirement is gonna require five out of seven votes on this issue.
Okay. So, these are the objectors that is in your package, you've seen that, right? We have any discussion? Trustee Rockford, anything to, you wanna ask or make clarification for?
No, I, I, what I was waiting to hear, I may mention, so, I'm content.
Okay. Do the board members feel comfortable moving forward on this, this evening?
I guess I am. I, I, I look at it this way, taking land that can be, that you want on it, make it R one. They can build houses on it, but, you know, as far as the concerns about environmental impact, well, they have to follow all the training rules, they have to have elevation rules, the village has. Cutting down trees, well, the owners who cut down these trees, the expectation is the owner's not gonna cut down trees that adversely impacts his property. And, I guess I don't, and utilities, well, they need to have power, utilities, well, they'll pay for them like any other lot owner has to do. So, I guess I don't, I don't understand the problem, why we're taking property that can put up chickens on it, and now they have to put houses on it. I, I don't understand.
Is that a motion?
It can be.
Is there any other, any further discussion? I mean, I'll call for discussion after the motion and the second, which is, but...
I'll just tell you, I think the neighbor's concern is they don't know what's gonna happen, right? And that's the, they're, they're used to looking at the tree lines and stuff like that. And of course, I mean, it's not that their concerns aren't real and legitimate, you would, you would have the same concerns. It's just that the ordinance doesn't speak to them. Like, the ordinance doesn't say you can only cut down twenty percent of the trees on your lot, it just doesn't say that, you know? So, I mean, some of their concerns, although they're real, the ordinance doesn't, the ordinance doesn't speak to whether something should happen. It just says, you either can or can't, and that's why...
And I guess that's why I...
That's why it comes here in the board.
They say, we're taking it from, we're like, one more of us, to now we've gotta follow the rules. And if a person's going to buy the property, they have to have power put on it. They're not gonna, they're gonna do things to enhance the value of that real estate. And having one or two homes is probably better than having who knows what.
I think, and, and I was there only for the first meeting, not the second, but the concern of a lot of the neighbors seemed to be that this would be, that these would be houses outside of the bounds of the subdivision, and not subject, not, not part of the homeowners association, and not subject to the restrictive requirements of the, of Steeple Chase. But, there's nothing we can do about that, even. And again, well, as you just said, and they have to, they're gonna have to jump through all the hoops, so.
Well, it has to follow all the ordinances, the billards, the building, you know, sod, and all these, you know, that sort of, rocks and that.
Right.
I get, it's change, you know, people don't like change, I mean, they, they see all the wood, but I think you cut the wood down right now, but...
Correct.
And, you know, they could, I guess.
Right.
Anybody's comfortable with moving forward?
I am.
Yes, 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 yes?
Let me read, I think we have a motion from Trustee Schultz, right?
Yes, that's my one.
Okay, so Trustee Schultz will make a motion to adopt the recommendation on the petition, zoning change for thirteen oh nine Arlington Chase. This is ordinance number twenty-two dash ten. I'm gonna read it in the record. It's a legal potential, so. An ordinance authorizing a change in zoning classification from ag to R one for the property parcel zero six dash three six point zero dash four hundred dash zero four zero, located at thirteen oh nine Arlington Chase in Sherman, Illinois, six two six eight four. Again, ordinance number twenty-two dash ten. Motion's been, Trustee Schultz making a motion, is there a second?
One second.
Trustee Hon seconds that motion. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, Deputy Clerk Stratton, would you please hold the roll?
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Trustee Long.
Yes.
Trustee Long.
Yes.
Trustee Rockford.
Yeah.
Trustee Schultz.
Yes.
Trustee Bull.
Yes.
Okay, so that is six members of the village board voting yes, none voting no. The ordinance twenty-two dash ten, right?
Yes, sir.
Twenty-two dash ten is adopted, motion carries, will be later recorded. Next, we need to move to Sherman Police Department, Chief Banger, do you have any report this evening? Director Mike Mose, Sherman Mansions Management Agency, any reports?
Nothing unless there's a question.
Questions for Director Mose? Sherman Public Works, anything? Director Newton?
Just like to say thank you, Paul, Morgan, and Mayor, for your continued support for public works department, sure is appreciated.
Yeah, thank you for all you guys are doing.
Thank you guys so very much.
Oh, yeah, everybody, Police Department, Mansions Management, everybody. Okay, that brings us to new businesses, of which there is no new business. Brings us to old business, is there any old business before the board? Which there is, if we have nothing, that's the only thing. We have no civic organization seeking recognition, it's gonna bring us down, just like to state before we go to public comment, that executive session, there is no executive session this evening. So, we'll go back to the public comment period. I have a list in front of me, sign-ins, one, two, three, four, five, six people had signed in officially on the sign-in sheet. I have two individuals seeking recognition, one is Mrs. Sandra Walden, so I'll call her to the podium first. Ms. Walden knows board, the board policy, and then Lauren Silkowski will be after her. Just so you know, the board afford, per board policy, there's a three-minute time, time period that you are allowed to address the village board, any village board, under Illinois statute, and you can talk about anything that you want. So, Ms. Walden, I'll, you set the timer, you go ahead, well, somebody set the timer, since I got Kim on, Kim's on right here. And we're somewhat liberal with the time, you know, depending on the issue as best we can, but we need to adhere to it as, as best as possible as well. Ms. Walden, you can start.
Okay, I, I, two things, I wanted to know if there was any more discussions on your, um, proposed, possible proposed policy about limiting the number of pets on property based on square footage of the property, and, you know, where that, I don't want that conversation to die, obviously, so, 'cause that could happen to anyone, including any of you.
Yeah.
So, just wondered where that was, or, you know, wanted to remind you to please keep working on that.
Okay.
Um, the other thing was about this discussion of the parcel that's being zoned from ag to residential. I think it's interesting that this piece of parcel between Steeple Chase... I think it's interesting that this piece of parcel between Steeplechase and basically Brookside Glen, or is it Brookside Glen, or is it? Queer, you know, Quail Ridge, or whatever, between two subdivisions.
Prairie.
Okay, so, it's like, it's kind of going to be an odd duck where it's not going to fit into either one of those subdivisions, you know, which is kind of odd. And I think it's interesting that it's ag, but yet, the property that is south and west of Steeplechase is still considered R one when it's in a flood zone, and really shouldn't be R one. I mean, nobody's going to build on that piece of property where it's, you know, woods and flood area, and so, I don't know why that has been allowed to continue to be R one when it really should be rezoned as ag, you know? So, you know, you've got a flat parcel up here between two subdivisions that's ag, and then you've got a huge parcel of, several parcels of flood zone area that's R one that should be ag. So, I think that needs to be corrected, honestly. But, that's my two concerns, so.
Okay, all right, well, thank you very much for your time.
Yep.
The next individual who signed in is Lauren Sokowski.
Hello, I am Lauren Sokowski, resident of the citizens of the forest. I'm a Sherman resident, along the line, but it's a court, and I'm set in the streets. I'd like to present petition to the village of Sherman for analyzing of golf carts in accordance with six-two-five I L C S five dash eleven dash one-four-two-six-one. Golf carts help build a sense of community, we are a close knit community in Sherman, we believe golf carts are a safe, easy road, excellent location, while they cost efficient. They agree they limit emissions, are environmentally friendly. With rising gas prices, we believe they provide an alternative mode of local travel. They're also beneficial for those with physical limitations, that they too can enjoy awesome events at our park and camp area. Golf carts will also help with party at the camp theater as well during these events. Taylorville and Williamsville have adopted similar laws utilizing golf carts. I currently have two-hundred-and-twenty-nine signatures interested in this petition, and I am submitting this to you all in consideration of safety under the accordance of the six-two-five Illinois law, and request that you should consider this request.
Very good. Do you have that petition?
I do.
Do you have a paper form?
I do. I emailed. I had emailed it.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, that's fine, as long as we get it in the records, all right.
Okay, would you like me to?
He's old school, he wants paper.
Yeah. So, drop off a, a paper?
You can email it, it's fine.
Okay.
No, if you have the, if you have the original. How did, did you do it electronically as well?
Yes.
Yes, that's what I thought.
Are you wanting a?
But, so, there's no, because sometimes we have electronic version and a, like, walk in door to door, and asking people to sign, or, you know, whatever the case may be. And so, if there is a, like, actual paper written one, we would ask that those be submitted from, you know, to be kept in the file for a record.
Okay, yeah, I do not have that.
You just did it completely electronically.
Yeah.